Find the sheet with your name and address, please do. That's critically important for our record. You are part of the record and you will be part of the record, but I can't, we can't do that unless we know who was there. Alright, so thank you. And so, Mr. Long will help you with that, I promise you. Answer your questions while you... Give me a second to go later then. It's alright. Go on. Nah, they never share with me. And I have to sit here again, I can't... You don't know, you don't know my name.
Thank you. I think, firstly, we appreciate all the comments and there are a couple of clarifications that we'd like to make. Because I think there are a few things that might be misunderstood about closing. I think our suggestion would be, unless you have a problem with it, there were a lot of questions that were asked tonight. We have taken notes, I'm sure we can get communication from the city. We're not asking for the hearing to be closed tonight. We want more information. We do have architecture that's going to come forward. So maybe the best idea, rather than go through everything, let's just particularly business-wise, so we'd like a few clarifications and then do like have a little bit of time to go back, take all these questions down, get the things that are right in your culture and human, and then maybe that's a full response to you, a professional answer, rather than taking it off the top of our head and we must be sitting there. So that would be the recommendation, there are a few clarifications.
There, and we'll need that because there's some things that we allow you to listen and hear, but some things we need to get the record straight immediately tonight. And some folks won't be able to join us next month.
That's fine. So what I'd like to do, I think one of the main issues, and I understand the concept and the concerns that they're listing, but I want to make something very clear. This is what we are discussing. This project is proposed on private property that is currently industrial use with an office building that's there and a factory. We are not the park. This has been private property for decades. We are not taking any park land. I just want to make sure that people understand that. And it's a proposal that we're making.
Give me a second, folks. I put your promises. Thank you.
The proposal that we're making was, was before the city council, the context of a request to change the zoning to permit what we thought was a higher and better use, which the city council agreed, to the multifamily. If we had not done that, if the city council had not done that, this would not be park land. This would be at the time a vacant office building, which would be permitted to be, at that time, you could come in with a proposal under the current zoning, to have a factory there, to have an office there. You could potentially have a cannabis facility, although I would tell you as a matter of public information, they're closing cannabis facilities, they're closing the Riverview facility in Yonkers, it's a project here to create a memory care facility right on the Hudson River, a spectacular location, because those places are struggling right now. So again, yes, some of this has to deal with reality and what could or could not happen. Before Wood Partners came to this property, this was on the market for over two years by a company going out of business desperate for money. Let's please make it clear, the money that's owing taxes is not Wood Partners'. It's the current property owner who's broke and they're intending and they hope that they close and sell to Wood Partners', that money will go to tax pay, they'll pay off the taxes, and will have to, as part of the sale. So that is the intention. It's not wood taxing double things. So I'd like to, again, those were government issues. A few other issues that were raised, again, is point of clarification. There was a traffic study that was done and it was reviewed by the city council and the professional staff when we did the traffic study. The issue of the hours that made King Lawfis confused because it's both events. It was done during the week at peak hour, which is, when you talk about peak hour during the week, eight to nine, four to five, those are the peak hour times. And you have to study those times because it looks at what your initial traffic would be when you add it to those peak hours. But because of the specific nature of this property, because it's next to a park, we also studied the peak hours between 10:00 and 2:00 on a weekend day. Because that during the summer is when it is most busy. So when you do your traffic study, what you call a peak hour is when you study when it's at its most intense, the worst case scenario. That's what we did, that's what our study consists of. Again, all of that is part of the record. It was determined by the council, I just wanted to make that clear. In addition, there was also something that was misunderstood. We don't suggest there are only going to be three visitors to the building. That's not what was, that came across the wrong way. There was a parking study that comes in. You have a certain number, and this was done in a very substantive way because not only would we comply with the parking, you would come in and say, here's what's required under the code, we had to convince the zoning board that our parking that we were proposing was adequate for the site. So it was a significant parking study as part of the environment and also before the zoning board appeals. The number that we have there, there's a shared analysis. People come in and out. Visitors come at different times, et cetera. All of these things were studied and the number was deemed to be adequate by the zoning board appeals. So what we were talking about is there were a few spots they were thinking of because it was said that none of them would be designated. There were a few spots near the front door that were thinking of designating as visitor's parking, first come, first served. Everything else is open to anyone other than the garages, which will be going to specific residents. If that doesn't meet the pleasure of the board force when we talk about making modifications, that means the proposal was harder to make sure that that came across. With respect to the county, and there were some questions about the county, this was referred as part of the city council rezoning process through the planning board of the county in its review. Letters were received back, don't have them with me tonight, but again, they're part of the city record. And it was reviewed by the city as part of the project that decides to always notice as the county planning board, as part of a referral required by counties of the charter statute. And it was looked at by the county, it was reviewed, and they were part of the rezoning process. So that's another thing that I think was important. They are, the Parks Commissioner has been personally at two meetings without contented and he's absolutely thoroughly focused on the impact of this project on the park, what it's going to look like, how the parking is going to lay in to where they currently are so that we don't impact the park in any kind of negative way. County is so hyper-focused on that in the meetings we've been in. So much to say, as you mentioned earlier, comment. They're not letting us put a path in, they're not letting, they want that park to stay exactly the way it is, in its pristine condition. That's what they're going to do. Finally, the only other thing that we did get a little bit off-topic, I apologize for that, I'll mention a bit, it was in response, I'll mention the fact that, you know, there were studies of socio-economics that are part of the EAF that were named and are getting part of the record. I will make a personal comment out of it because I know there's a lot of talk. Not that this is not in a vacuum. I want people to understand, and I get it, there's anger and people want things to be better, and so do we. This goes on in every municipality. You don't compete by yourselves. These projects that Wood Partners are looking at, they're also looking at whether our competitors in Yonkers, in New Rochelle, in your neighborhood communities. They're directly pilots because they recognize that these projects will get built without it. They don't work without it. And you can go, I can take a look. And you can take the position, we don't want it, that's okay. But then the projects won't get built because they're going to go to the communities where they are being built. So there is an analysis that goes by and not everybody agrees on it. If you, as it was pointed out by someone, I forget who said it here, it's absolutely less than the full taxes would be. But if you're not building it, it's not from what's compared to what's there and that's what the idea looks like, looks at, and that's the decision that they make. So that part of the process, I just wanted to point it out. I apologize, I know that's not before you, but... With that, I think you'd like to answer the more specific questions unless you have anything specific tonight. As part, in a more thoughtful way, technically, if you want, I'm coming back, you know, at a question.
I have something specific that might impact what we present next month. There's been a lot of talk, and you just described the development of the city planning, I mean, the county planning department and the Parks Commissioner. If there are 136 parking spaces now and the county plans to overlay it on 140 because the description was that there would be at least 136, probably more, so let's say 140, maybe 150. Can we get a proposed topographical overlay of where those parking spaces would be hypothetically? I'm not asking you to mind yourselves to that and you have no control over the county, but if you've been at meetings with the county people, they must have some idea of where they want to put those parking spaces.
The current need discussion with the county, how they do with requests and the whole message that we need in January to go forward with the access easements. So we will certainly make the, I can create it for you, but we can certainly make the request in the county for that information. And I also want to make one other thing very clear. I know Stuart had given a comment. We also take the part of the community that's there. It's not that we all work in parks. A lot of these questions came up Monday night when we had the work session with the planning board. The reason is very difficult to answer sometimes in two days. So for example, on the architecture, we hear you. We are going to make changes to the architecture referred to board, referred to public, but it was impossible to do in two days period. So we actually, the last couple of days, have been on numerous phone calls. We've been looking at views of existing properties and possible architectures. Now, I'm on the golf, it's not my expertise, but we're already starting to work on it. But we immediately want to just throw something together to Joe T. Do you want to have something very professional written for us next up for you?
I have a comment. The same way I reminded the Commissioner to be careful not to make comments that are made to specifically steer the board or the community to believe one thing, one way or another, that may or may not be factual. I'll remind you to do the same and be cognizant of that. You know, when you mentioned about catering halls are closing all throughout the surrounding areas, there have been, most recently, a few successful stories as well. Whitby Castle in Ride. That was the city of Ride that came up with that concept and they started that, and they, actually, they floated a bond and then they got restaurant associates to operate it and pay for that bond and so the taxpayers never had to pay a penny. And they got a catering hall out of it. They restored this castle. Gallagher Estate in Norwalk, in Cranberry Park. Same concept. City of Norwalk took this older estate, converted it to a bank facility, and it's very successful there. So, you know, when you make a comment and you only give one side, just be careful because to me, it seems as if you're steering the board and the community. So if you, if you've done your research and you know absolutely that there are no positive projects such as catering halls aren't successful, don't just mention the ones that are negative. I mean, that fail. The same way for the Commissioner. If you aren't sure that there aren't other studies that show more students being added to a school district in an urban environment, don't just mention the ones that show less. So we have to make sure that the comments that we make are balanced and that they're not meant to steer.
Respectfully, and again, I am very careful to say things in record. I am an advocate. I am representing Wood Partners. I am in a position of advocating the project and I don't shy away from that. Both of the things that you mentioned are municipally owned projects, which have been very different, and by the way, already existed, I believe, in Whitby. I don't know the one, even though I don't know, I believe the one in Norwalk.
Whitby was just a mansion that they added a banquet facility to.
Correct. Things for existing structures, which are very different from a rental kind of thing that would have to be done. It's not to go, my point is, this is in fact private property, not municipal. I mean, this municipally owned property is absolutely irrelevant for the community to get up and come in here and say, you know, this is what we own, it's our property, we own it. This is private property. It's subject to a proposal being made by a private owner. You know, city has the right to go through the courts and say, yes, we don't, within the little context of the law and things of that nature. And I, you know, I don't want to suggest, but I'm only very clear that I wasn't trying to mislead you in any way, but I'm pointing out that a place which I think is extremely similar to this in a city and urban environment, Westchester County in Yonkers, on the Hudson River, right now, facility's been there for many years and we're all familiar with, had to close because it wasn't working. Whether this would work or won't work is really not, to be honest, still in the conversation, which is, you know, it was just a comment.
So let's, if we have, we'll take you up on your offer to have a comprehensive reply to a lot of these questions. Perhaps unless any commissioners have any other comments, maybe we'll do a little inventory here and see what we have and summarize what we have and I'll reveal the ineptness of my note-taking today. So, neptitude, I guess.
Oh, I do have actually another comment. And actually, when we first mentioned, I know the Commissioner's brother just mentioned that as well. So I know you keep going back to the fact that it is a private project on private property. However, that private project on that private property may have a public impact, such as creating a parking lot in another spot by the county and that would have an impact, you know, on the public use. So even though this is private land and it is for, you know, even development that, you know, you currently have been granted by the zoning board that we will use, but it will have an impact. And so our purview is to look at all those impacts and then how it will impact the character of the neighborhood, setting, traffic impact, safe passage through the park, pedestrian passage, I know you've heard the comments yourself. So that is our purview and those are the things we'll be looking at.
Thanks. Any other comments? And I'll, I'll attempt to... So no, so we'll summarize what we have and then I'll take that all-important mode. So we talked about, there was some parking, some setbacks, and the applicant is going to reply back to us with that redesign of that. There was, and I may have to ask the applicant to reiterate, there was a comment from the public with regard to fire and fire control, and you did not get an answer to that. So I will ask you to come back and briefly reiterate that comment because the member of the public may not have heard you on that. You don't have to go into all the detail, but there is a difference. Thank you. It was building shape and we understand that you're, that you're sharpening your pencil and you're getting back to looking at the things that are comparable and more fit within the local community as well as the park, et cetera. There was an, there is, and this is, this is a combination from my notes of two or more comments. Comment about the fact that the five hundred foot range, which is legal and which is, you're satisfied appropriately. However, just for community communications sake, may not have been sufficient. And so there perhaps, and this is my words and I will, I'll sit back if the Commissioner wants it correctly. There may be an opportunity for community outreach on behalf of this applicant between now, definitely between now and the next time you come before his board, but, and then some. I'll also offer to you, they got hated. But we also have other schedules for other land use boards, the ZBA, zoning board, as well as the architectural review board. Whether or not you have to go before them, there may be opportunities for this applicant to find the public that you can engage and help, help discuss some of these aspects. Because I think some of these things are communication, as you can hear, and I think we can get past some of the difficulties. Other things will have to work more. Like for example, there was a comment, a question about impact to wildlife. Particularly, they use microtory birds, and that was a question. And especially up against the county's comments about keeping the undisturbed...
I have something specific that might impact what we present next month. There's been a lot of talk, and you just described the well-known city planning, I mean, the county planning department and the parks commissioner. If there are 136 parking spaces now, and the county plans to overlay them on 140 because the description was that there would be at least 136, probably more, so let's say 140, maybe 150, can we get a proposed topographical overlay of where those parking spaces would be hypothetically? I'm not asking you to mind yourselves to that, and you have no control over the county, but if you've been at meetings with the county people, they must have some idea of where they want to put those parking spaces.
Even though we're in discussion with the county, how do we do with requesting the whole new message that we need in January to go forward with the access easements? So we will certainly make the request, I can create it for you, but we'll certainly make the request in the county for that information. And I also want to make one other thing very clear, I don't still have any comment. We also take the part of the community to understand, it's not that we all work in part. A lot of these questions came up Monday night when we had the work session, the planning board, the reason is very difficult to answer sometimes in two days. So for example, on the architecture, we hear you, we're going to make changes to the architecture referred to board, referred to public, but it was impossible to do it in two days. So we actually, the last couple of days, have done numerous phone calls, we've been looking at views of existing properties and possible architectures, now I'm on the golf, it's not my expertise, but we're already starting to work on it, but we didn't want to just throw something together and show you, we want to have something very professional written in this next up meeting.
I have a comment. The same way I reminded the commissioner to be careful not to make comments that are made to specifically steer the board or the community to believe one thing, one way or another, that may or may not be factual, I'll remind you to do the same and be cognizant of that. You know, when you mentioned about catering halls that are closing all throughout the surrounding areas, there have been most recently a few successful stories as well. Whippy Castle in Ride, that was the city of Ride that came up with that concept, and they started that, and they actually, they floated the bond, and then they got restaurant associates to operate it and pay for that bond, and so the taxpayers never had to pay a penny. And they got a catering hall out of it, they restored this castle. Gallagher Estate in Norwalk, in Cranberry Park, same concept, city of Norwalk took this older state, converted it to a banquet facility, and it's very successful there. So, you know, when you make a comment and you only give one side, just be careful, because to me, it seems as if you're steering the board and the community. So if you, if you're, if you've done your research and you know absolutely that there are no positive projects such as catering halls aren't successful, don't just mention the ones that are negative, I mean, fail. The same way for the commissioner, if you aren't sure that there aren't other studies that show more students being added to a school district in an urban environment, don't just mention the ones that show less. So we have to make sure that the comments that we make are balanced and that they're not meant to steer.
Respectfully, and again, I am very careful to say things directly. I am an advocate, I am representing the partners, I am in a position of advocating the project, and I don't shy away from that. Those are the things that you mentioned are municipally-owned projects, which are very different, and by the way, already existed, I believe in Whippy, I don't know the one anymore, I don't know, I'm familiar with the one in Norwalk.
Whippy was just a mansion that they added a banquet facility to.
Correct, these were existing structures which are very different from a brand-new kind of thing that would have to be done. It's not difficult, my point is, this is in fact private property, not municipal, I mean, this municipally-owned property is absolutely appropriate for the community to get up and come in here and say, you know, this is what we want, it's our property, we own it, this is private property, it's subject to a proposal being made by a private owner, you know, city has a right to go through the courts and say, yes, we know, within the little context of the law and things of that nature. And I, you know, I don't want to suggest, but I don't want to be very, I wasn't trying to mislead you in any way, but I'm pointing out at a place which I think is extremely similar to this, in the city and urban environment of Westchester County and Yonkers, on the Hudson River, right now, facility's been there for many years, it was all, I mean, had to close because it wasn't working. Whether this was work or no work is really not to be on the subject of the conversation, it's just, you know, it's just a comment.
So let's, if we have, we'll take you up on your offer to have a comprehensive reply to a lot of these questions, perhaps unless any commissioners have any other comments, maybe we'll do a little inventory here and see what we have and summarize what we have, and I'll reveal, you know, my note taking today, so, net to, oh. I do have actually another comment. And actually, when we first mentioned, I know the commissioner's smarter, just mentioned that as well. So, I know you keep going back to the fact that it is a private project on private property, however, that private project on that private property may have a public impact, such as creating a parking lot in another spot by the county, and that would have an impact, you know, on the public use. So even though this is private land, and it is for, you know, development, you know, you currently have been granted by the zoning board, that would be real use, but it will have an impact. And so, our purview is to look at all those impacts, and then how it will impact the character of the neighborhood, setting, traffic impact, safe passage through the park, pedestrian passage, I know you referred to comments yourself, so that is our purview and most